All right. I'd like to welcome you all to the public hearing for Isqwa Highlands Retail, the Isqwa Highlands Medical Office Administrative Site Development Permit, and the Isqwa Highlands Self-Storage Administrative Site Development Permit. Appreciate you being here. We've got a few administrative things we need to take care of. First one is, you know, the discussions are being recorded, and we need to make sure that we speak loud enough so that our recorder can hear that. We tend to not do that, so please make sure you're well-heard. I'd also like to remind everybody that we're trying to keep the notion of within an hour, talk for about an hour, and then we need a little break, and then we'll get back. You've done real well at that, so I appreciate that. And we have some minutes from January 15th. Our January 15th. That's not right. Our previous minutes. We need to approve. That would be the minutes from the special. It says January 15th. It is January 15th, and 16th. So did I get a motion for that?
Mr. Chairman, move we approve the minutes of the January 15th, 2019 meeting?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Does anybody have comments on those? And we get a motion? Do you approve? I got it. I'm not with you. Frozen brain, I guess. So, all those in favor approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved unanimously. How about the January 16th? How about the January 16th meeting minutes?
Mr. Chairman, move we approve the January 16th, 2019 minutes?
Second.
All those in favor, any discussion? All those in favor of approving those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Better? Okay, thanks. Please remind us. We don't mean for it to be difficult for you to hear, so we might need reminded. So with that, I think we're ready to begin. Mr. Lal, would you start us off?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nice to see everyone. I believe that we are in the middle of Ms. Heim's direct examination, and I would yield the floor to Ms. Quarey.
That's correct. And so we'd like to recall Tia Heim. And Tia, you were sworn in before you began your last round of testimony. Do you acknowledge that you're still sworn in and testifying under oath today?
I do.
So I'd like to begin this evening by kind of taking a step back and reminding us where we're at. You had been walking us through a chronology before with your testimony. And so can you just, again, high-level, walk us through the five different applications and four different projects that Shelter has before the city right now?
Sure. We first have the plat application, which takes the 21 acres and divides it up into five blocks and 10 lots. And then we have a retail site development permit application, which covers about two and a half of the blocks or five lots. We have an office. I guess that one's a site development permit preliminary land use application. We have a medical office administrative site development permit application, and we have a storage facility administrative site development permit application.
When we're talking about those different applications, are we talking about one building or a couple buildings? What does it look like overall?
So on the site development and administrative site development permit applications, they are, let's see, three of them just have a single building on each one. The retail one is significantly different in that respect in that it involves multiple buildings. I think there's around 11, although I'm not certain on that number, that are included in that site development permit application for the retail project.
Is it a short process to put together those applications?
No, it's not. It's a very involved process of both pulling together all the materials that the city requires, but also planning out particularly the retail development in a way that makes sense and will be functional for the community and for the end users and the people who would lease space in the center. And the same goes for the other applications. It's just a little bit less involved when there's a single building as compared to multiple buildings.
So I'd like to dive back in to kind of the chronology of things that we were going through and where we left off in your last evening of testimony. And there was, I think we had left off roughly in the timeframe of beginning of 2017. Does that sound about right?
Sure.
Okay. And so if we could turn to a new exhibit in the record, and I'll pull it up again on the screen for the commission. Well, this will be, I think, 42.
Is it in here already?
Let me check and make sure we're on the right number. This will be S-43. Oh, Pat, that's my bad. It's S-42.
Is there a copy in here, or am I gonna get one from Pat?
You'll get one, but I'll need it back from Pat. So, Pat, I need one of those copies back. All right, there you go.
Okay.
Can you describe what this document is at S-42, please?
Yes, this is a letter from our outside counsel, Patrick Mulaney, to Keith Niven. And it was requesting authorization for city staff to begin the process of negotiating an amendment to the development agreement to allow for a three-to-five-year extension as applied to our property.
Can you describe why Shelter provided this letter?
Yeah, so there were always a lot of different ideas and discussion going around about what would happen with our property. In January of 2017, we had received the message loud and clear from the mayor and the administration that they did not want to talk about any proposal that had residential involved in a mixed-use proposal for our property, and had instead instructed us to go do something that was consistent with the development agreement. So at this point in time, that's what we were starting to do, and it made sense to ask for an extension if what they wanted was consistency with the development agreement, to just extend it out to give a little bit more time on the existing development agreement.
Was there any concern that there would be an expiration, and it would affect your vested rights at that point?
No, not at all. We didn't have any, we didn't have any concern that the vesting provisions under the development agreement, as it existed at that point in time, wouldn't be honored or followed.
And so what would be the purpose of the extension? Just to allow more time in a leisurely pace, or something else?
Yeah, I mean, the development capacity that we had under the development agreement and have under the development agreement is 1.8 million square feet. And 1.8 million square feet of any type of development is something that you want to plan carefully and be able to implement correctly over a period of time. So, you know, we thought that this was a step towards trying to work collaboratively with the city to plan what they were asking us to do on that property.
And if I recall correctly, last time you had talked a little bit about the community outreach efforts that Shelter had done in the past.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
And so would that play into going forward too in terms of the timing and what you might be involved in?
Yeah, we always like to solicit the input of the community and have the ability to incorporate that as we move forward with our projects. The other piece is, as you talk to the end users, whether that be somebody who's going to purchase a piece of the property from you or lease a building, they want to know not only an application that you submit now, is that going to be honored, which of course it would be under vesting rules, but they also want to know the long-term plan for property around them. So we saw this as a step that could be positive for the city, for the end user, and for us.
And so this letter you had mentioned goes through some of the market outreach that Shelter had done in the past. And so, and you had said that, you know, this was, there was a change essentially in looking at different development proposals. You also mentioned, though, a minute ago, about a shift from residential. But did Shelter have residential allowable development at the property?
Yes, we do have three residential units. But the previous, I guess I wouldn't even call it a proposal because there was never a formal application. But the idea that we had been exploring with the community was a true mixed-use community that had a significant amount of residential over, in the form of apartments or condominiums, over retail development, and with some medical office and office mixed in as well.
I'd like to turn now to the meeting minutes that we had started to talk about at our last hearing with you. And there's a binder in front of you that should have those meeting minutes.
Yes.
Just for councils, for the city, nothing has changed about the binder. It's the same as what you had before.
Chairman, may I ask a clarifying question of council?
Please.
Ms. Quarey, just to clarify, the meeting minute binder that you're referring to, is that Ms. Heim's notes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, yep. It's the notes that we introduced and that we'd been using along the way with her testimony last time.
Thank you for that clarification.
So if you could turn in that binder to the January 17th, 2017 meeting?
January 17th?
Yes.
Okay.
What was the, well, first of all, who attended that meeting?
That meeting was Keith Niven, Gary Young, Patrick Mulaney, and me.
And what do you recall was the purpose of this meeting?
I believe this was a follow-up to the letter, Exhibit S-42, that we were just speaking about.
So as a follow-up to that letter, what did you start discussing in that meeting?
At the beginning of the meeting, Keith indicated that he didn't think we had legal standing to request a development agreement extension. And so we talked about that some. He asked Patrick to give him more information on that.
Was that information eventually provided?
Yes.
And so was that issue kind of put to rest as things moved forward?
I thought so, although I think it came up one or two other times and was responded to both by our attorneys and also by Port Blakely, indicating that we do have standing to amend the development agreement with respect to our property and other related issues.
So down there in your notes, it looks like it's about seven bullet points down the page. Can you explain what you meant in the notes where it says that Keith indicated that he was really hoping that Patrick would take the first crack at identifying what's vested from the DA and what needs to be incorporated into new zoning? And I'm paraphrasing there.
Yeah, I think what that note was referring to was there was discussion, and I think we heard Patrick Mulaney testify about this, that there was discussion about what should carry over from the development agreement regardless of whether there was applications pending. So there was a certain amount of mitigation and other things that were provided under the development agreement in exchange for allowable development rights. And so there had been ongoing discussion when we had met with Keith in various meetings about how some of those items, in Keith's view, should be carried over and reflected in the zoning. So I think that note was indicating that Keith asked if we would have Patrick go through the development agreement and identify what should be carried over.
Did Patrick eventually do that?
He did.
And I think if we turn to... It should be S-29. Okay. So looking at S-29, one of the existing exhibits in the record, is that the response that Patrick provided?
Yes, this is one of them. And this was the letter that goes through, and I think we referred to it as the mitigation matrix, but goes through the development agreement section by section and identifies the mitigation that should be carried over after the development agreement ended.
So going back to what was discussed in that January 17 meeting, there's also some discussion in your notes about BSP. Can you describe what a BSP is?
Yeah, a BSP is a binding site plan. And so back in January of 2017, our initial intention was to come in with a binding site plan rather than a plat. A binding site plan is basically an alternative land division mechanism that's available in some cases. So it's an alternative to a plat. Often in a binding site plan, you see more detail and more planning work than you would in a typical plat. So we felt like that might be the best mechanism for us to use going forward as we started to prepare the property for eventual development. So when we were speaking with Keith about that, his initial response was, well, you can't do a binding site plan because it's not allowed in the development agreement. And Patrick then pointed out to him that it actually is allowed in the development agreement, and in fact, it's defined as one of the implementing approvals, which is a defined term within the development agreement.
So how did discussions about the BSP and the plat proceed from this meeting?
Well, at that meeting, there was additional discussion, and Keith acknowledged that you could do a binding site plan, but that he really wasn't sure exactly how it would be processed or what the submittal requirements would be because they hadn't done many in the city at all and hadn't done any in Isqwa Highlands. And that we might want to, I think we talked about that, we might want to do a plat instead.
And so I think on that note, I'd like to introduce a new exhibit, which will be S-43. Can you describe what the document at S-43 is, please?
Yes, this is an email to Keith Niven from Patrick Mulaney.
And what's the email discussing?
It's a follow-up to that discussion that I was just describing regarding binding site plan that happened at the January 17 meeting. And so this email follows up on that and acknowledges that the development agreement does allow specifically for binding site plans, but doesn't have a specific process. And then articulates that it's Shelter's position that it would be appropriate to follow the code's binding site plan process and the BSP checklist and BSP submittal requirements.
So was this the proposal in terms of the process that was going to be used? Was this something that Patrick was just volunteering, or was it something that was asked for?
I think this was asked for in the meeting on January 17.
And then down further at the bottom of that email, it's saying that Core Design, Inc. will be contacting the city to schedule a pre-application conference. Who's Core Design?
Core Design was one of our consultants on the binding site plan application, which eventually became the plat application.
Was that pre-application conference scheduled and actually held?
It was. There were a few steps before that.
So if you could turn to, back to your meeting minutes in the binder in front of you to the March 21st, 2017.
Yes.
Meeting. Can you describe what the purpose of this meeting was and who attended that meeting?
Yes, so the March 21st, 2017 meeting was a collaboration meeting for our binding site plan and plat application. So what we ended up doing was putting together both to go in to have the collaboration meeting. So at that meeting, the people that attended were Keith Niven, Lucy Sloman, Dan Irvin, Gary Young, Patrick Mulaney, Mark Veldy, who's with KPFF and is our engineering consultant, Dave Caton, who's with Core Design, and myself.
What did Director Niven have to say about the timing for plat vesting and how that would work?
At this meeting, he was very specific about how plat vesting and vesting through the plat works. What he said was that the preliminary plat would vest for five years, and then five years, five additional years from the final plat. And that if you filed a complete site development permit application within that five years after final plat, that the site development permit application would also be vested through that plat. And I mean, that was a major part of the discussion and was very clear direction given to us as to how to proceed and why we should proceed with the plat versus the binding site plan.
Did Director Niven or Ms. Sloman in that meeting have anything to say about what process the preliminary plat would follow?
They confirmed that the preliminary plat would follow the process in the development agreement. They made one caveat that if the development agreement was terminated while we were in process, that we would be vested, but that if they got rid of the UVDC, that another commission would be substituted. But the process would otherwise be the same.
So just to clarify, what you were saying there was the caveat on vesting or substituting the development commission for the UVDC?
The caveat was with respect to the commission substitution.
And so can you, I think we're looking at the same bullet point here on this page. Can you just read that bullet point into the record, please?
Sure. It says Keith and Lucy confirmed that the P plat would follow the process in the DA. And Keith added that if the DA is terminated while we are in process, that we are vested, with one caveat, if they get rid of UVDC, he says that they have the right to substitute the DC for the UVDC.
And the UVDC, I apologize if you already defined this, but what does that mean?
The Urban Village Development Commission.
Do they still exist today? I'm introducing a new exhibit. This is going to be S-44. Will you please describe what Exhibit S-44 is? Have you seen this before?
I have, and I believe that these are Lucy Sloman's notes from that same meeting on March 21st, 2017.
And how are you familiar with them? How did you come to have these notes?
As documents were being turned over, I believe in response to a public records request, although it could have been in discovery, these files were made available to us, and I saw these in Ms. Sloman's files.
What did Ms. Sloman note about the timing for the plat?
So her notes indicate, well, they say, pre-plat, five years, final plat, five years, then SDP, three years, vest, not process. So I understand that to be her notes that say essentially the same thing that I just described to you, that Mr. Niven outlined for us at that meeting.
And so just to clarify, where it says FP, you understand that to mean final plat?
Yes.
And where she says vest, not process. A minute ago, we were talking about your meeting notes that said that the process would follow the development agreement. That's something that Director Niven and Ms. Sloman had indicated in that meeting?
Yes.
So is there a difference here? Or what's your understanding, just your understanding based on these notes?
My understanding is that that refers to exactly what I had previously explained, which was that the process could be different in that you go to a different commission if the UVDC no longer existed.
Turning back to your notes, I'm looking at the second page of your notes now. And what did Ms. Sloman have to say about the timing, so both the timing of the plat process and how long that would be anticipated to take, and also the steps that she anticipated would be a part of that?
So my notes read, Lucy outlined the plat process as follows and said should be six months start to finish. The first bullet was collaborative meeting, which was that day. Second was pre-app to address traffic and utilities. They'll circulate to all the departments for big-picture items. Third was submittal. Fourth, staff report available 10 days before UVDC. Then UVDC, usually twice, but this may get through in one. Then to council, they'll refer to land and shore for one or more meetings before decision. When we pushed for how quickly we can get a pre-app meeting scheduled, Lucy said she was not sure because she has no planner capable in taking a plat. She ultimately said maybe six weeks, but she needed to check with Keith, who had left the meeting by this point.
Going back to something that you Going back to something that you testified about in the prior hearing, is a preliminary application or a collaborative meeting, either of those things required under the development agreement for plat application?
No, neither of those steps are required.
Was it your understanding, based on this meeting, that Ms. Sloman and the city were requiring those for your plat application?
Yes, they made that clear.
You mentioned that Ms. Sloman anticipated that the process should be six months start to finish. Where are we at in the plat process right now?
Well, I mean, that meeting was in March of 2017, and we are in the process of revising to resubmit, but we didn't get complete comments and clarifications from the city until late December. So, we're, I don't know, more than a year?
More than the six months that was estimated?
Yeah. And that, that six months was estimated when we were at collaborative meeting. But they described our plat as very simple and should be easy and quick to process. And at some points told us that it was, that they expected not to have any comments, that they would just come back with proposed conditions and go straight to hearing. And that didn't end up happening.
So, is this meeting the point in time that Shelter decided to pursue a plat application instead of a binding site plan?
Yes.
And why did they end up going that route?
In part because Keith made it clear that the city would support the plat application and the vesting through the plat application.
What's, kind of big-picture functionally speaking, what's the difference between a preliminary plat and a final plat?
A preliminary plat is, I guess it shows all of the parts and pieces that will go into a plat and does all of the layout of streets and utilities and that sort of thing to create the lots and how development will be serviced on those lots. The final plat gets recorded typically after the plat is all the way built, so the infrastructure is actually constructed. You know, there's, there's some exceptions to that, and sometimes you bond for certain things, but usually when a final plat is recorded, the plat has actually been constructed, which is why there's that gap of five to seven years, depending on the jurisdiction, to allow you to get, get the plat actually constructed.
So, when Director Niven and Ms. Sloman were talking about a preliminary plat and five years of vesting, and then a final plat and five years of vesting, that was accounting for those two different kind of sections of the plat, phases of the plat?
Right.
So, following up to this meeting, you noted that there was, you had requested kind of timing in terms of scheduling a preliminary application meeting that you said the city was requiring at this point for the plat application. And I believe that was scheduled in late March, and we're going to be looking at a new exhibit, A, which will be S-45. So, I'm looking at the, actually, the last page of that, represents an email chain, and so, we're starting back at time and back in time on the last page. Can you describe what this email was? What was the date? Who was it to and from? What was it about, please?
So, on Monday, March 27, I sent an email to Ms. Sloman, following up on the meeting that we had had the previous week, and asking to schedule a pre-app as soon as possible.
What was Ms. Sloman's response?
She said, "We can schedule a pre-app," and she directed me to Christopher Wright as being the person that would schedule that. And then she said, "However, before we put that on the calendar, we need all the necessary info. We are okay from a planning perspective, but from an infrastructure one, we need enough info to know that you can and how you'd service what utilities for your entitlement." And then she goes on to say, "We also need the traffic study that Dan discussed. Without knowing the roads, traffic, interconnections, et cetera, we aren't able to have the full review we need."
So, what was your response to that?
My response to her was that I wanted to make sure that I was understanding correctly that she was asking for a full traffic study and utility plan before we could schedule a pre-app meeting, which seemed very excessive to me. Based on my experience, that's not the level of detail that you need to provide for a preliminary application meeting. And then I also asked her for, for a checklist of what was required prior to pre-app that we should follow.
And what did Ms. Sloman have to say about the checklist?
She said, "There is a checklist, but most of it won't apply." And then she said she would defer to the engineers regarding how much of the traffic study would be required for the pre-app. And so, so what we ended up doing was having our transportation engineer follow up directly with Dan Irvin at the city and, based on their discussion, a full traffic study was not required for a pre-app.
So, again, is a preliminary application a requirement for a plat application in the first place under the development agreement?
No.
And what was the timing of all this? Was this, was the development agreement still in place?
Yes. This was March of 2017. It was...
Had the build-out period expired?
Build-out period had not expired. No replacement regulations had even been proposed or drafted at that point in time.
So, the next exhibit that we're going to be adding to the record is a fairly bulky one because it's a lot of the preliminary application materials that were submitted. I'll, of course, ask you to walk us through them, but just to give you all a heads up that there's a large packet coming. Okay, so there's a packet of documents that are divided up. They're all going to be submitted as one exhibit, just to keep it a little bit simpler. But bear with us as you kind of get each one passed out. So, the packet of materials that you're getting will be S-46 in the record. Okay. So, Tia, there's a large number of documents in front of you at S-46, but can we start with that first document and the first page of that exhibit and describe what that is, please? Sure.
Okay. So, the first one that I have is a copy of our check that was our application fee in the amount of $2,500.
Okay. And what was the date that this was submitted?
The date on this check is April 4, 2017.
And what was the $2,500 for? Was that a processing fee or something else?
It's the preliminary land use application submittal fee. This was actually, this, I believe, is the fee that is charged by the Isicua Municipal Code, which probably should not have applied to our project since we were under the development agreement. But it was the fee that the city indicated was due with this application.
And what's the second document that you're looking at there? So, that was the first part of this packet.
So, the next thing that I have is the land use permit application form.
And can you describe what that is, please?
It's a city form that just has basic project information, applicant, owner, contact, a brief project description, some site information.
And then how about the next page that you're looking there in the packet? And how, actually, just so that it's clear in the record, how many pages is in that land use permit application?
The land use permit application...
Looks like there's page numbers at the bottom there.
Five.
Thank you.
So, the next thing that I have is a one-page proposal summary.
And what was the proposal summary for?
This was one of the requirements of the preliminary land use application submittal, and it's just a summary of what the application is proposing.
And how about the next document in that packet, please?
The next document is a one-page transmittal cover sheet from CORE that lists out the items that were provided.
The items that were provided to the city?
Right, to the city development services.
Okay. And how about the next document that you're looking at there?
The next thing is a plat project narrative dated April 5, 2017.
And what is that document?
This document is a more detailed summary of the project, and it actually goes through each of the appendices of the development agreement, which is where the development standards are found.
And how many pages is that document? I think there's page numbers at the bottom.
This document is 16 pages.
And then, the last document in that packet that you have, what is it?
This is actually the plat document itself, or the version of it at that point in time. So, it's, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So, it's seven pages.
And what is, what does that show? What is the plat document?
So, the first page has legal description, restrictions and title exceptions, site statistics and notes. The second page... The second page shows the proposed lots. And at this point, at the preliminary land use application stage, we were proposing 14 lots, which the city later asked us to change. The third page has utilities and storm drainage, basic info. And then, some of these other pages are just zoomed-in sections of certain areas of the plat where there's utilities that need to be seen in more detail. And then, the last page has an overview of the property and different views from different points on or around the property.
So, was all of this prepared just for that preliminary plat application?
Yes, all of this was required as part of the preliminary land use application.
And I apologize at the risk of sounding repetitive, was this something that was required under the development agreement?
No, it was something that was required by city staff.
And in terms of a preliminary application, you had mentioned, for example, that the lots, the number of lots changed over time. So, was this truly something preliminary, or was it, would there be a final, more, more final version of the application that would follow this?
Yes, I mean, yes, there would be a more final version of an application that follows it, but this was much more than what you would typically think of a preliminary application or package, and much closer to a full plat submittal. And the reason why the number of lots changed on this plat was that the city told us that they didn't like us creating 14 lots and that 10 was the maximum that they would support, and that if we did not reduce it down to 10 lots, that they would make the process more difficult and make the, I'd have to look at my notes to, to give the exact direction they gave, but basically that we would be held to a higher standard in demonstrating compliance with the development agreement vision if we did 14 lots versus 10 lots.
So, let's turn next to Exhibit S-11, one of the exhibits that's already in our record. Tia, will you please just refresh all of our memories? What is, or what are the documents at this Exhibit S-11?
S-11 is an email chain. S-11 is an email chain between me and Lucy Sloman, and at some points, I think Jean Lin as well, regarding our preliminary plat.
Okay, and so it looks to me that the, this is also kind of in a reverse chronology, that the older, or the oldest email in the chain is going to be going back at the very end of that exhibit. Is that consistent with what you're seeing?
Yes, and that first email is actually from Ken Shipley at CORE.
And so Ken Shipley, you said at CORE Design, is he one of the consultants that was, is working with you?
He is.
And so what was Ken doing in this email?
So he was following up, the email he wrote on April 13th, 2018, was to Doug Schlep and Jean Lin with a CC to Faye Shafie, I think is how you say her name, myself, Mark Veldy, Mike Swenson at Transpo, and Dave Caton, who's also at CORE Design. And he was following up on our March 29th meeting that we had had regarding the initial preliminary plat comments, which we had received from the city on March 16th of 2018.
And I think Faye Shafie may be a new name for us in the record. Who is that?
My understanding was that she did, did or does transportation operations for the city. But that was actually the first time I had met her was at that meeting.
And so in this email, Ken mentions that we're awaiting answers, information or action from city staff. And we don't have to run through all of these things, but kind of in summary, what were some of the things that you hadn't received direction from the city yet on?
So there was a new condition that was different from the direction we had previously received and the feedback we had previously received to extend Park Drive through our plat, which was not supported or needed by the transportation analysis. And so we had asked, we had asked for, well, actually, we had asked in that meeting to discuss it. And despite the fact that we were there with the senior planner, the transportation's operations person, and the engineering person for the city, none of them said that they could speak to the Park Drive condition because they said it was initiated by Keith Niven and Lucy Sloman, and they were the only two that could speak to why that was now going to be required, rather. So we had immediately requested a meeting with them to discuss that. We also were looking for clarification on some road standards. We were asking for clarification of exactly what they were asking us to show with respect to dry utilities, which usually aren't shown in detail at that stage. And then some other standards that were really related to adjacent projects.
So, and in this email, Ken mentions, he states, Jean mentioned the existence of an AMM to the road standard and that she would distribute it for review. Are you able to send the referenced AMM? What is an AMM?
It's an administrative modification. And that's something that was provided for in the development agreement.
Is, is an AMM, could that be an administrative major modification or an administrative minor modification?
I think by definition, if it's an administrative modification, it's supposed to be minor. If it was a major modification, it would be an amendment to the development agreement.
Do you recall whether that AMM was provided?
Eventually, it was.
So let's go further up in time. So that email was dated Friday, April 13th, that we were just discussing. When's the next email?
So the next one is Tuesday, April 17th. And Jean Lin responded saying, "Thanks for your patience. We have been working on a comprehensive response to the follow-up items from our meeting and your questions below, and we'll be getting back to you tomorrow."
And remind me, who is Jean Lin?
She was the planner that was assigned to our plat and actually to all of our applications.
And did Ken respond, Mr. Shipley respond?
He did, he just responded, "Thank you, Jean."
When's the next email that you received from the city?
April 18th, 2018.
And again, it's a rather lengthy email. But in general, what was provided as part of that email?
So in that email, some of the things that we requested were provided. But then a bunch of additional feedback or and/or direction was also provided, some of which was not consistent with the written plat comments that we had received in March of 2018, which was what sort of started this whole discussion with the city. So we now had conflicting comments that we weren't sure how to, how to proceed.
What were, what are some examples of the conflicting comments that were causing you concern?
Well, Discovery Drive, they were changing what they had indicated the road classification should be. And they were asking us to apply a multipurpose trail standard on top of the street standard so that you would have a street with a trail on top of it. They were changing, they were telling us to follow a standard, but then saying, "But make these modifications to the standard." And we couldn't follow where the modifications were coming from, or if they had any basis in code, or if there were AMMs to support them.
And so following this email, what was the response from Shelter?
So I sent an email back on Thursday, April 26th, that responded and followed up with questions and requests for clarification so that we could revise our plat and resubmit it.
And could you read the first paragraph of your email back to Jean Lin, please?
Sure, it says, "Jean, we are puzzled and concerned that the city has again changed the direction that it's giving us with respect to the rights of way and trail connections that will be required within our plat, as well as with respect to the scope of the transportation analysis and information that will be required. We are even more concerned that many of the comments that you provided are not consistent with the development standards set forth in the development agreement to which this application is vested. The city has acknowledged that our subdivision application is vested to the development agreement, but the city appears to be ignoring the standards in that agreement and the requirements it is imposing on us. We request that you provide response to the following questions and comments."
And so then you'd gone on to list out various questions and comments that Shelter had?
Correct.
So it was your understanding, just based on this email, it sounds like it was your understanding at this point even that the city was acknowledging that the plat application was vested to the development agreement. Is that accurate?
Yes.
So there's another email then. This was, the email that we just talked about was sent on April 26th. What's the next email in that chain?
On June 6th, 2018, I emailed Jean with others copied, asking her, "Please advise as to when we can expect a response to my email below as we are unable to revise and resubmit our preliminary plat application without clarity regarding the city's additional comments and corrections in your email below. Thank you."
So April to June, had you received any feedback from the city on the plat during that time?
No.
And what's the next, first of all, the date of the next email in that chain? And what is the email?
So on June 8th, Jean responded to me and said, "Hi, Tia, we are still working on these items and we'll be getting back to you with our responses next week. Thanks for your patience."
That was June 8th of 2018. What's the next email?
June 29th of 2018, I followed up with another email to Jean that said, "Just checking in again to see how you are coming on the response to my email from April below. If you could let me know when we can expect a response, that would be helpful. Thank you."
So, and I'm, it sounds like from your email that you hadn't received a response within the week that Jean had mentioned in her prior email?
No, no, we received no response and no follow-up until after the email that I just read.
And what's the next email in that chain?
So I had written to her on June 29th. On July 18th, she wrote back to me saying, "We are in the process of finalizing our responses and aim to get those to you at the end of this month." So that would be the end of July 2018.
So July 2018, and are we still talking about the questions and comments that you had back in April that you'd submitted?
Yes.
And what's the next email from Miss Jean?
The next email is on August 16th, 2018. And again, it's from me to Jean. And I say, "Following up again to check on timing of your response to the questions in my email from April. Your last email indicated we should expect a response by the end of July, and it's now mid-August. Please advise as to when you anticipate being able to provide a response so that we can continue to move our plat forward."
So there's still no response at this point?
Correct.
And what's the next email in the chain?
So later that day, Lucy responded and said, "I apologize that this has taken longer than anticipated. We had some coordination with other departments and some research to answer your questions. I commit that you will have it next week before I go on vacation the last week of the month."
Had Miss Sloman indicated at any point in the past since April, when you submitted your questions, that it was going to take this amount of time to coordinate with other departments or do some research to answer your questions?
No, the only timing indications we got were the ones that you just heard me read from, from Miss Lin.
And what's the next email in this chain?
So the next email is from Friday, August 24th. And it was Lucy's response to me, which had some attachments, which were their responses to our questions, a copy of an administrative modification, and a response on a question regarding polygons, roads, which I think, yeah, I think that one was, they provided us a link that I think at that point did not work. It was password protected and we didn't have a password.
And so that was, what was the date on that email again? That was...
August 24th, 2018.
Okay, and how about the next email in this chain?
So then that's October 10th, 2018. And that is an email from me to Lucy with more questions and follow-up and clarifications needed based on the responses that they had provided.
So following this October 10th email from you, again, we don't need to walk through every single detail in here, but there was, all represented, it's a fairly long email. Can you describe just kind of the bullet points of each of the different concerns that you had at that time? And questions that you had at that time?
Well, I think the, the first paragraph describes some of it. Well, where we say, "While we appreciate your offer to have collaborative discussions regarding applicable standards, it's important for us to understand which standards apply per applicable law, in this case, the development agreement and any modifications thereto, before we can evaluate potential changes." So there was a lot of response, a lot of their response referred to wanting to start collaborative discussions with us about various standards, when what we had asked for was, well, what standards apply? Specifically with AMMs to the road standards, the AMMs aren't something that is published anywhere or available to the public. So our only way of getting the AMMs that would apply to our property would be from the staff. So it didn't seem like that should be a major request that required research since they would have no way of evaluating, of having evaluated our plat to provide the initial comments if they didn't know what AMMs applied before they did that review. So that was, applicable road standards were a big part of it. Trail standards, like I said, classification of Discovery Drive, the Park Drive requirement, and what they wanted covered by transportation analysis. And then again, the dry utilities. They were asking for a level of detail that just, none of us that were working on this plat, and we have a very experienced team, had ever seen a request for that level of detail on dry utilities on a commercial plat. And then again, you see the reference to the polygon roads that we were asking for the approved plans. And the link at that point wasn't working because it needed a password.
So at the bottom of your email here, after you list out the different questions and concerns you had, what did you explain to Miss Sloman in terms of the timing of all of this?
I said, "As you know, we're anxious to move our plat forward, so we appreciate a prompt response clarifying the city's comments and providing the information requested so that we can revise and resubmit our preliminary plat."
Do you recall how long it took to get a response to this email?
I believe that we got a response to this email, I think it was the week of Christmas in December. So it was either right before or right after, I can't recall.
Of 2018?
Yes.
Thank you. So I'm mindful that we're about seven minutes past an hour in at this point. Is this a good time for us to take a break? Or would you like me to continue?
Depends on how much longer you intend to go. If this is a good time for you to break, we would appreciate a break.
I think this is a good time. We'll be a bit longer with Ms. Heim this evening.
So let's take a 10-minute break.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, ready for us?
All right, we're back on air, so yes, please continue.
Tia, I'd like to pick up where we left off there, talking about Exhibit S11. It was the email string. What was the kind of the overarching concern in your back-and-forth with the city, starting with those April of 2018 comments that you had, in terms of the direction that you were trying to get and concerns that you had?
So, the biggest problem was that we could not determine from the comments that we were receiving what were requirements that came from code, and in this case, code being the development standards that were enacted by the Development Agreement, and what were just other requests or desires that were being lodged at us by the city for other standards that we followed, that they wanted us to follow, rather. So, what we were really trying to get at through all of this back-and-forth was, what is the code that we're starting with? Because we need to understand what the requirements are before we can talk about anything else. And the comments and responses that we were receiving from the city didn't clarify that. And they just kept going in different directions and not giving us those ties back to the Development Agreement, the development standards that were enacted by the Development Agreement. So, that was the major concern. And a piece of that was the AMMs that we've been talking about. And just to clarify what that is, is it's an administrative modification of one of the development standards in the Development Agreement. So, those could have come about in a variety of ways, but they were typically something that was applied for either by a project applicant in the past or by the master developer. And it would be a modification to a specific development standard. And sometimes, they would apply on a, like, area-wide basis to a whole portion of the Isaguacahilins. Or sometimes, it would, an AMM could apply only to a specific project. And so, when I referenced earlier that the AMMs aren't published anywhere, they're just maintained by the city, that was why we had to rely on the city to provide us with any modifications of the standards that actually applied to our property or to our project. So, that, again, was part of that effort to make sure that we understood the universe of the rules that we were playing by to design our plat. So, that's, hopefully, that gives a better description of kind of the struggle that we were going through. And we really didn't feel like we were asking for anything unusual or unnecessary. This was really the minimum necessary that we need to be able to know if we are designing our plat properly.
And you had mentioned some confusion. And so, it was confusion about what the Development Agreement required versus what you were seeing in the requirements from the city. Is that right, or is it something else?
Right, so some of the requirements, or the, yeah, some of the requirements that were coming back in the comments from the city did not come from the Development Agreement. And so, we were trying to understand where were they coming from. And I think ultimately, what turned out to be the case was that they weren't coming from anywhere other than that's what the staff thought they wanted to apply. And so, they were sort of re-categorized in some cases in the communication, the most recent communication, as attempts at collaborative discussion.
Would you characterize the back-and-forth that was going on as collaborative?
No.
All right, we have a new exhibit for the record. It's going to be S47. Tia, will you please describe what the document is at S47?
So, I believe that this is a consolidated file of Jean Lynn's notes with respect to our projects.
And how have you become familiar with these notes?
I believe that these were part of the documentation that we received, either through a public records request or through discovery.
Have you reviewed these?
I have.
We turn to page six of the notes. And unfortunately, they aren't page-numbered. But I'm just counting to page six there. It's, I'm looking at a page that's titled "Questions and Comments", and it's dated Tuesday, May 30th, 2017, at 10:18 a.m.
Okay.
Did Miss Lynn note anything there in terms of direction that she had gotten with respect to your project?
Yes, there's a section on this page that's entitled "Direction from Lucy."
And can you tell us what some of the direction was about? What did she provide? What did, and I'm assuming is Lucy, is it your understanding that Lucy is referring to Miss Sloman?
Yes.
And so, what sort of direction did Miss Sloman provide?
So, the first bullet there, "Just map out the blocks and uses. Do not subdivide into smaller parcels", was sort of along the lines of what I had described earlier this evening about Miss Sloman directing us that 10 lots was okay, but 14 was not. There is also a bullet about halfway down in the list that says, "Originally was supposed to give city land for a university, but they backed out." And this, I believe, refers to the statements that Mr. Niven had also made in meetings with us, indicating that had we given them the land for the university, that they would be treating our application differently and more positively. And then, if you look at the very last bullet, I think is also significant in that it notes that SEPA is not a concern because entitled use is fully covered by a previous SEPA analysis. So, that's a reference to what we discussed in my previous testimony on whatever night in January that was, that the part of what you got with your entitlement under the Development Agreement was that the SEPA for the full build-out had already been done, that SEPA analysis had already been done.
So, going back to something that you said a minute ago, the notes say, "Originally was supposed to give city land for a university, but they backed out." Is it your understanding that Shelter was supposed to give the land for a university?
No, my understanding is that there were ongoing discussions at a certain point in time, early on, both prior to Shelter's purchase and just after the purchase, about that happening, either a donation of land or a sale at below fair market value or an option at below fair market value. And that ultimately, that was not something that Shelter was willing to move forward with. And that there were city staff that harbored very hard feelings about that on an ongoing basis and had cited to us on multiple occasions that that was part of the reason why our applications were not being treated favorably. So, to me, this note here was that sentiment being passed on to somebody who was new to the city in Jean Lynn.
We could go, I believe it's going to be a little bit further up. So, on that first page to the May 26, 2017 entry. Under the section titled "General Notes", what did Miss Lynn have to say about the complexity of this plat?
Her notes state that it should be a fairly simple plat, which was consistent with what they had initially expressed to us in the pre-op meeting. And then, the second note goes on to note that we may be interested in vesting development for 10 years. Expiration for a preliminary plat is five years, plus another five years to file the final plat. So, again, this is reference to that meeting, the collaborative meeting for the plat, where Mr. Niven outlined the, how the vesting works for a plat and the five years for preliminary plat and the five years... plat, and the five years for final plat, and then three years for a site development permit if it's filed within that timeframe.
Is that consistent with what Ms. Sloman had told you as well? The timing?
I guess I'm not understanding your question.
In terms of, had you been told that the five years for a preliminary plat, and five years for a final plat, and three years for SDP, was that consistent with what you'd heard from Ms. Sloman in terms of what she expected the timing to be, or for vesting specifically, not for processing the applications?
Yeah. I think she was present at the meeting, but it was Director Niven that was giving the direction on how the vesting for the plat and the final plat worked, and the site development permits.
Thank you. And then at the bottom of those bullet points in the general notes section, what does she say in terms of written comments?
We should give them written comments.
So, and again, what was the date of these notes?
That appears to be May 26, 2017.
And so approximately how long, and we walked through the email chain a minute ago, but approximately how long did it take for you to actually get written comments on this?
We didn't receive comments on our plat that was submitted August 1, 2017, until March 16 of 2018. This note, based on this timing, it could be that she's referring to pre-app meeting notes. I don't recall off the top of my head what the date of the pre-app meeting was, but typically the city provides pre-app meeting notes after the pre-app as well.
So Ms. Lin calls this a fairly simple plat. And we heard earlier, you testified that Lucy anticipated about six months for the plat application. Is that correct?
Yes.
And so how long has the process actually taken at this point?
Well, I mean, if you go from when our collaborative meeting was in March of 2017, and we're now in February of 2019.
A long time.
Yes.
Longer than six months?
Absolutely. It took more than six months for us to get a single comment on our plat application.
So we can come back to these notes as well, but do you recall, did Jean Lin make notes on any of the other applications? And you can take a minute to flip through, I know there's a lot there.
Yeah. I believe that these are consolidated, so she's got other project-related notes. So she's got some that are internal coordination meetings, and then she's got some plat condition notes, which I don't think are things that we've ever seen through the plat process, plat review process. There are, oh, there's the preliminary plat pre-app meeting notes, and it looks like that was on May 31, 2017. So likely her May 26, 2017 meeting notes are her preparing for that meeting on the And then it does look like she has notes from the medical office collaboration meeting, the retail collaboration meeting, the self-storage collaboration meeting, the office health club collaboration meeting, and then medical office pre-app, retail pre-app meeting, office health club pre-app meeting, self-storage pre-app meeting.
So aside from the sufficiency letters that we saw from Ms. Sloman's testimony and those types of communications, were these notes given to Shelter at any point in this process?
No, not through the application review process.
You mentioned that we received them either through a public records request or through discovery, and is that the first time that you'd seen these?
Yes.
Let's turn to your meeting minutes finder, please. And we want to turn specifically to the May 31, 2017 meeting.
Okay.
So can you describe this document? This one looks a little bit different, I'll just represent, than your other meeting notes. It's in an email form instead of handwritten notes. Can you explain what the difference might be, just in terms of the format?
Yeah. I mean, sometimes when I did my meeting minutes, I would stick them in an email. Sometimes they'd be in a document attached to an email.
Okay. And so what was the meeting that took place on May 31 of 2017?
So that was the pre-app meeting for the preliminary plat application.
And do you recall who was present at that meeting?
I know that Lucy Sloman and Jean Lin and Doug Schlep were there, and I was there. I believe that Eric Evans and Dave Caton, Mark Veldy, and Mike Swenson also attended as our team.
And so can you walk us through what you talked about in this pre-application meeting with respect to the plat?
Sure. So this was when they introduced Jean Lin to us and that she would be our planner that was assigned to our plat. And they told us that she's a senior planner, coming from California, had plenty of experience, but none in Isaguacahilins yet, so that Lucy would be helping her through that. We started with the number of lots, and Lucy made it clear that she didn't like 14 lots, and that she had the expectation that she was only going to see five lots, just one lot per block. And we pushed back on that a little bit, and where we ended up was that she was okay with two lots per block, as long as there was a pedestrian connection somewhere mid-block. And then my notes say, she said that if we did more than that, then they would require an analysis for each lot of all, of how creation of the lots furthers the goals, guidelines, and policies, and they will want us to prove that building setbacks and orientation and access work. However, if we go with just two lots per block with 10 total, then they will just require a brief narrative explaining it's consistent with the planned block length, and that details of development will come with future land use applications.
So she said that details of development will come with future land use application. What did you understand that to mean?
I understood that to mean that details of the development and how it complied with goals and guidelines and policies would be at the site development permit level.
And in terms of the allowable development allocation, first of all, can you describe on the preliminary plat application how the allowable development was set forth or described?
Yes. So what we did was, you've heard me refer to the allowable development under the development agreement that had been allocated to our property, and it was 1.8 million square feet of various types of uses. So what we did on the preliminary plat was we included a table of allowable development, and it was allocated on a block-by-block basis, so that it would be, you know, X number of square feet of retail allocated to Block A, you know, X number of commercial allocated to Block A, and the same for Block B, C, D, and E. So that was how we addressed it. And at that initial meeting, Ms. Sloman indicated that she liked the allocation table that we had created.
What did Ms. Sloman have to say about the timeframe and the process overall?
So she explained that the full submittal would be the next step, and that we should coordinate with Chris Wright on that. And then the city would review and do a staff report, which they would give us a chance to review, and that then the UVDC would get the staff report when we can advance of the hearing. And then there would be two UVDC meetings, one for a presentation and to ask questions, and the second to answer the questions and get the recommendation, and then it would go to council. And she said that she felt like staff was overloaded, so she didn't have a good guess as to timeframe for the entire process, but that her hope was that it would be done by October.
So, and this was in May of 2017, and she's saying that she could hope, hopes that it could be done by October. Is that correct?
Yes.
Did your planner, Ms. Lin, did she ever change? Was there ever a different planner on this plat application throughout that time period?
No. Jean Lin has been our planner throughout the plat application, and is also the only planner that's ever been assigned to all of our SDP applications.
Have you received a staff report on your preliminary application, or your preliminary plat application?
No, we have not.
And has it gone before UVDC?
No.
City Council?
No.
So this exhibit was introduced earlier, but if you could just remind us, what is this exhibit at S-8?
It's an email string between Keith Niven, Sarah Hoy, who is the executive director for the Isaguacahilins Community Association, and Lucy Sloman.
And I'm looking on the first page, about halfway down, there's an email dated June 6, 2017, at 1:35 p.m. Can you describe that email for us?
Sure. That is an email from Mr. Niven to Sarah and Lucy, and it says, "Hey, Sarah, once you have a vested permit, you are okay, even when we sunset the DA. If there's a six-month period where the project goes idle, we could determine it inactive. To keep that from happening could include submitting for related permits, giving us a letter saying you need an extension, or by other means. Since you understand this requirement, I am not concerned, so long as this moves forward, at least somewhat continuously."
So this was June 6, 2017. What did you understand it to mean when Director Niven is saying, "If there's a six-month period where this project goes idle, we could determine it inactive." What does that mean to you?
Well, I think it's getting to the idea of vested permits, and so he's explaining to her that once she has a permit, she's vested, and as long as that permit stays active, she remains vested. And so when he starts talking about permits going inactive, that is when you could potentially lose vesting.
Have any of Shelter's permits been inactive?
No.
Is this what he told Sarah, what Director Niven told Sarah Hoy in June 6 of 2017, when he states, "Once you have a vested permit, you are okay, even when we sunset the DA." Is that consistent with what he was telling Shelter?
Yes.
So when he's referring to sunset the DA, what does that mean to you?
He's referring to when the development agreement for Isaguacahilins terminates.
And in terms of being okay, what does that mean to you?
That your permit would still be vested.
Tia, will you please describe what this document is?
This document is the city's follow-up to the pre-app meeting for our preliminary plat. So these are their preliminary plat pre-app comments.
And what's the date of these comments?
June 7, 2017.
And I see David Caton's name there at the top. Who's David Caton, again?
He is with Core Design, and he, at the time, was our main contact for this plat.
So going down to that second bullet point, after it says, "There's a title, action items required prior to PP submittal," I'm looking at number two. What did the comments have to say with respect to the development allocation?
The comment indicates that the block-by-block development allocation could be adjusted later on, provided that there was language to make sure that there was sufficient utility and traffic infrastructure to support any proposed reallocation.
So the development allocation, what's that referring to? Is that the allowable development that you were talking about?
Yes. So that's referring to the table that we had included on the preliminary plat that had the allowable development allocated on a block-by-block basis.
And so did you understand this comment to mean that there was some flexibility in terms of how that allowable development would be allocated going forward?
Yes.
Who, do you recall who these comments came from?
I believe they would have come from Ms. Lin, but they should include comments from other departments, and as you see on the second page, there's a section that says, "Comments from Public Works Operations."
So they incorporated comments from various different departments at that time?
Yes.
All right, this next exhibit is going to be S49. Tia, will you please describe what the document is at S49?
So this is a letter from June 9th of 2017 that I sent to Mr. Niven and Ms. Sloman. And this is really related to the replacement regulations. At this point in time, there was no draft of the replacement regulations, but we had started, as you've seen in my notes, from much earlier than this, having discussions with the city about what those might do. And they had always expressed an indication that they wanted the replacement regulations to ultimately mimic the development agreement, or put another way, was to essentially codify much of what were the development standards from the development agreement. So one of the things that they had asked us if we would do was to go through and provide input regarding which elements of the development regulations from the development agreement should be carried over into the new zoning. So what we did was we hired Weinstein AU to help us do that analysis. They are really experts in urban planning, and so we had them go through the code, both the existing Isaguac Municipal Code and the central Isaguac code provisions, as well as the development standards that were implemented by the development agreement, and make recommendations with respect to what the city should do with the replacement regulations. So it was a pretty extensive exercise that they went through, and that my letter is just a cover letter to their recommendation, which is attached.
And so Weinstein was, you mentioned that they were hired, so Shelter paid them to do this review for the city?
Correct.
When you had asked them to prepare this review with respect to the replacement regulations, was there any concern at that time about vested rights and how they would be treated going forward?
No, this was totally separate from that. I mean, at this point in time, we had a couple of things going. One was a plat application, and we really didn't have any concern that the vesting provisions under the development agreement enacted through the development agreement wouldn't be honored. At the same time, the city was going to go into a process to adopt new regulations that would ultimately apply to our property at some point in time. So we were obviously quite interested in those as well, and we're tracking and trying to provide help and comments along the way. I mean, we were still hopeful that this would be a collaborative process.
So in terms of suggestions or kind of planning for the future with the replacement regulations, did it change anything about what the development agreement and the development regulations adopted through it required in terms of vesting?
No, the development agreement continued to apply until the new regulations were effective, which didn't happen until the very end of March 2018. So, and even then, the vesting provision in the development agreement would still govern with respect to applications that vested under that set of regulations.
So the next set of documents, they're going to end up being S50, but we have a number of exhibits, again, that they're individual documents, but they're a packet as part of a larger submittal. So I think what we'd like to do to kind of speed up the process of getting those to use, to mark them all as Exhibit S50, but divide them into subparts so that we can talk about Subpart A, B, C, as we go along, just to keep it moving, if that's okay. So this would be, the one that you're getting right now is going to be S50A. And Tia, while that's being passed out, will you please describe what this document is?
This document is a preliminary stormwater report to support our preliminary plat application.
And so just to provide a little bit of context, we're going to be talking about, excuse me, talking about the preliminary plat application, and so is this part of it?
Yes.
Okay, next, we have S50B. And what's the document at S50B?
It's the affidavit of agent authority. So it is Gary on behalf of IHIF Commercial LLC giving David Caton at Core Design permission to act as our agent on behalf of the plat application.
And next is S50C.
And this one is the affidavit of ownership. So this is, again, Gary on behalf of IHIF Commercial, indicating that IHIF Commercial is the owner of the property.
Okay, and next is S50D.
And this is the plat project narrative dated July 15th, 2017.
Okay, and let's pause on that one for just a second.
Oh wait, yes you do.
Oh, I gave you two.
That one's not labeled, though.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so let's take a pause and look at that exhibit, which is S50D. So you mentioned that that's a project narrative. Can you describe for us what that document was intended to be, what purpose it serves?
Well, I believe the plat project narrative is a required part of the submission package for a preliminary plat, and this one is set up to be modeled after the staff reports that are often issued for plats in Isaguac Highlands.
Okay, and the date of this is July 15, 2017. So was this part of the application that was submitted for the preliminary plat at that time?
Yes, this is part of the application that was submitted on August 1st, 2017.
And remind us again, we went through the preliminary plat application process, and now we're at another phase in the plat application process. So what's happened between then and now, the preliminary and this application?
So we had the preliminary land use application submittal for the preliminary plat. And then you saw, we got the comments back from the city. So we had the submittal, then we had the pre-app meeting, then following the pre-app meeting, we had the written comments that came back. And then this is part of our submittal for the preliminary plat application.
And this is a rather long document. It goes into a fair amount of description about the project. But in general, what sorts of information is it providing? Can you kind of walk us through the document?
Sure. It's, you know, has some background in the summary of the proposed plat. It has some permit history on the property. And then it goes through all of the development standards in the development agreement. So in Section 3, you can see development standards and regulations, and it goes through and analyzes it under the main body of the development agreement, and then each of the appendices that contain all of the development standards.
So when this was submitted, you said that it's dated July 15, but it was submitted on August 1st, was the development agreement still in place?
Yes.
Had the build-out period ended?
No.
So next part of this S50 exhibit will be S50E. So, and Tia, what is the document at S50E?
So this is the actual preliminary plat document itself.
Okay, and can you describe for us what was set out in that preliminary plat application document?
Sure, I mean, the first page has legal description, restrictions, and title exceptions, some survey data, some notes, site statistics, who the owner is, the civil engineering firm, geotechnical engineering firm. And then, as you go through the pages, it's got the lot layout and road layout, it's got some utilities laid out, it's got some boundary and topo information, it's got site views looking into and around the plat, it's got a preliminary landscape plan, then engineering work, several pages of that. I think that gives kind of a general overview of what's included in a preliminary plat application.
And so in this preliminary plat application, how was the allowable development addressed?
So if you look on Sheet P1.O2, there is a table that's entitled "Allowable Development per Isaguac Highlands Development Agreement," and then in parentheses, it says "by block."
And just for the sake of the Development Commission, I apologize, because the PDF version is incredibly hard to see any of the numbers on. So I've got it zoomed in, but you're probably not going to be able to read that part just from what's on the screen.
And this one is also very hard to read. It's very small, small print.
We might try to find a better copy, just so it's a little bit clearer.
Yeah, this one is more clear, but it's still tiny, tiny print. Sorry, I was just a question.
That's okay. So that table that you're looking at, in terms of the allowable development, you've described it a little already, but with this document in front of you, can you explain how it was broken down, block by block, excuse me?
Yes, so it just took our total development, again, that we had allocated under the development agreement to our property, and broke it down on a block-by-block basis, and allocated retail, commercial, and the residential units among the blocks A, B, C, D, and E.
And we'll talk a little bit more about this as we move forward in the chronology, but did Shelter show building footprints on this one, on this plat?
They're not shown on this document that I have in my hand. There was a supplement to this application that was submitted in December of 2017 that showed the building footprints and parking. So this one just showed sort of the overall development plan of the plat from the perspective that it took all of the allowable development that was allocated to the property and spread it out on a block-by-block basis.
But in terms of showing specificity, in terms of what the development would be, was it allocating specifically retail to a certain block, or specifically commercial to another?
Yes, it allocated specific uses to each block.
And was this the preliminary plat that was used by the city for the public notice for your application, or was it something different?
Well, I mean, it's all one application. So when you're talking about, was this the preliminary plat, yes. Was this the page, no. The page that they used for the public notice application for our preliminary plat was the one that was submitted in December of 2017, which showed the building footprints on the lots.
And again, we'll turn to it in a little bit more detail in a bit, but did that, the one that was submitted in December, did it also show the allowable development like this one does?
Yes, it did.
Okay, so we have another part of Exhibit S50, this will be S50F. Tia, will you describe what this document is, please?
This is a memo from me to Jean Lynn, and it's dated 7/27/2017. And it follows up on her pre-app comments, or wait, let's see. Yeah, it says, "It thanks her for the review comments in response to our pre-application And it says, "We believe that our submittal pack contains all of the materials that are required for complete preliminary plat application. Your comment memorandum requested a letter from the IHCA ARC supporting the plat's design. We have submitted a copy of the preliminary plat to IHCA ARC for their review, and they have not indicated that they approve of the plat design, however, we have," and they have indicated, sorry, I misspoke, "they have indicated that they approve of the plat design, however, we have not yet received the official letter of support from the IH..." However, we have not yet received the official letter of support from the IHCA ARC." And then we note that this is not a formal plat submittal requirement. Therefore, we assume that submitting this additional information after the initial application will be acceptable and will not prevent the city from issuing us a determination of complete application for our plat. So to explain what IHCA ARC is, it's Izawa Highlands Community Association Architectural Review Committee. So the city was asking that we have a letter from the Architectural Review Committee at Izawa Highlands Community Association as a requirement of our plat submittal, which we did eventually submit. It just wasn't available at the time of the initial submittal. And we thought it was actually kind of an odd requirement at the plat level, since there wasn't really anything architectural for them to review at that point. But we did submit it, and this was just a memo explaining why it wasn't in the, with the application materials that were submitted on August 1.
Is that a step, presenting this to ARC? Is that a step that's required by the development agreement?
No, it's not. I mean, certain applications are required to go to IHCA ARC by the CCNRs or the covenants, conditions, and restrictions, trying to translate all the land use lingo. So some applications are required by the CCNRs to go in front of that body. So it was not really clear why the city was imposing that requirement on us. It wasn't something that came from the development agreement or the code standards.
So next, we have S-50G. And Tia, what is the documented S-50G?
This is, looks like is a SEPA checklist.
And so what is the, why was the SEPA checklist prepared for this preliminary plat?
I'm not sure why it was prepared. I think it was likely in an abundance of caution because the development agreement was clear that you didn't need to do a full SEPA checklist for development that was anticipated under the development agreement.
So next, we have S-50H. What is the documented S-50H?
So this is the preliminary plat lot closure calculations from core design.
What are preliminary lot closure calculations? What does that mean?
Basically, it's prepared by the surveyor to indicate that all of the lots are complete in that they have a line that goes all the way around them, a property line that goes all the way around them.
Next, we have S-50I. And Tia, what is the documented S-50I?
So it is a legal description. Okay, I just wanted to refer back to the plat so that I knew where it was referring to. So it's a legal description of a proposed public trail slash landscape easement across Lot 10. So Lot 10 is shown on the preliminary plat. And the city had indicated that they wanted a public trail landscape easement over that portion of the property, which is the far west of our preliminary plat.
Okay, and then S-50J. It says that it's a legal description for a proposed public sidewalk easement. Can you explain that document too, please?
It's a legal description of a proposed public sidewalk easement on the back of Lot 3 of the plat. I'm not entirely sure why this was included in the plat application, except for that Polygon was in the process of also trying to pursue their developments on the adjacent property. And they needed certain public access easements from us in order to build roads and sidewalks that are on portions of our property. So I think these, this is part of that.
Okay. And then the next document is S-50K. And that says that it's a, looks like a title insurance policy. And what was, what was the purpose behind that?
It's, it's a requirement of a preliminary plat submittal. So it just shows, it shows you and shows the city what the exceptions are, the easements and things that are recorded against the property.
Okay. And then the next one in S-50, and I think the last one in S-50, is S-50L. What is the documented S-50L?
This is a memorandum from Transpo Group that addresses traffic analysis for the proposed preliminary plat.
And who is Transpo Group?
They are our transportation engineering consultant.
So on that document, it mentions Michael Swenson. Who is he?
He's our primary contact at Transpo Group for our applications.
And how about the other person listed on there? Is that Darwin Lee, is that right?
Yeah, I believe so. And Darwin also works on our applications.
Thank you. So again, I wanted to just note that we're an hour past the last break. We have a ways to go with Ms. Heim's testimony, so we can continue to the close of this evening or? And how late would you like us to continue on this evening?
Well, we've said we'll go to 10 o'clock. So we're ready to do that. But it would be valuable to take a 10-minute break if that would fit your schedule.
Yes, that sounds great. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, we're back on here, so it's time to resume our meeting.
Thank you. We're going to start with a new exhibit, S-51. Tia, will you please describe what the document is, S-51?
Yes, it's an email chain between David Holmes and Christopher Wright and Lucy Sloman.
So who is David Holmes?
David Holmes is at Collins Warman, and they are our main consultant on the medical office building proposal.
If you look at the email, it's towards, I think it's on the second page of this exhibit. It's dated September 5, 2017, at 12:20 PM. Do you see the email I'm talking about?
Yes.
Who was this email from? Who was it to?
This email was from Lucy Sloman, and it was to David Holmes and copied Christopher Wright.
What did Ms. Sloman tell David about the process for site development permits?
She said that their process is somewhat different. We have a three-step process of one, collaboration, two, pre-app, and three, full SDP submittal.
Is that process, that three-step process, consistent with what's required by Appendix L of the development agreement?
No, it's not.
With the timing of this email, so this was September 5 of 2017, was the development agreement still in place?
Yes, it was.
Had the build-out period ended?
No, it had not.
So of those steps, the three steps, what steps are not required by the development agreement?
The first two, collaboration and pre-app. And to your point about had the build-out period ended, it hadn't at this time, but it also wouldn't make a difference because the development agreement, the development standards implemented through the development agreement remained in place until the new regulations were effective, which didn't happen until more than six months after the end of the build-out period.
So this was, do you recall what this email was related to in terms of your SDP applications? What project were you working on at this time?
Yes, this was the medical office building proposal. And I think this was David Holmes' initial outreach to the city to get the process started.
Okay, so if you go up to the next email on September 8 at 1:28 PM, David Holmes is emailing with some other people here. We've talked about Eric Evans. Who's James Walker?
James Walker is also at Collins Warman and also participated in our medical office building application.
Okay, and what did David have to say about the status of the process for the medical office building project?
So he said, "Christopher, thank you for discussing the pending SDP submittal for our MOB project with me this morning. I understand that you will confirm the first city collaboration meeting with me later today after you discuss it with Lucy. Given the typical available meeting dates, times, we tentatively set Wednesday, 9/27/17 at 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM as our collaboration meeting date to review architectural concepts."
And just for clarification and the record, do you or the consultants often refer to medical office building as MOB?
Yes.
So if we see it come up, they're kind of interchangeable?
Right.
Okay. Was it your understanding at this time that the collaboration meeting was something that was being required by the city?
Yes. And I mean, that's what his purpose in reaching out to Lucy initially was to find out what the process was. And this is the direction that the city is giving them.
Let's turn back to your meeting minutes. There's a meeting on September 7, 2017. What was the purpose of the September 7, 2017, meeting? And who were the participants in that meeting? Do you recall?
The notes don't say, but I know from looking at what the content of them is that this would have been a meeting that at least Keith Niven attended with me and Gary or Eric from my office. And I can't say for sure whether Lucy was there or not.
Okay. What were you discussing in this meeting?
I think we discussed various topics, both related to the replacement regulations and sort of how those would be, were being processed. And then also, we started discussing SDPs and ASDPs.
And so for the SDPs and ASDPs, did the city have anything to say in terms of the different steps that it was requiring for those submittals in this meeting?
Yeah, they walked through that same three-step process of the collaborative meeting, the pre-app, and then the submittal.
So the same three-step process that Ms. Sloman's email, I believe it was the day before, or two days before, had mentioned, is that accurate?
Right. And part of what we were doing in this meeting is we were introducing the idea to the city that we were coming in with SDP submittals. So we were, there's a note about P-plat timing, and so we were asking about the status of the plat, and we were getting direction as to how to submit the SDP and ASDP submittals because we weren't sure if one big SDP was going to be required, or if we could do it on a block-by-block basis while the plat was pending. And so we initiated that discussion, I think, at this meeting.
And so one big packet being potentially combining the full development of the medical office building, the self-storage, the office, and the retail versus breaking them out into separate SDPs and ASDP applications, is that clarification right?
Yes.
And so did you discuss the issue of vesting at all in this meeting?
I think we did, but at this point, there were draft replacement regulations out, but they did not contain any vesting language. And so the city was representing to us that when that language was included, what it was going to do was document the city's current process or current position, which was that you vest at preliminary land use application because of the West Main problem that they had identified and that you heard Patrick Malaney explain in his testimony.
So at this time, there, in the replacement regulations, can you take a step back and explain what those are again, just for some context?
Yeah, so the replacement regulations are the regulations that were ultimately adopted to govern Isaguac Highlands. And at the point that those were adopted in March of, at the end of March of 2018, that's what formally terminated the development agreement. But it was a process of developing those over time. And the initial hearing on replacement regulations was at the end of September 2017. So there were drafts in existence at the time of this meeting, September 7, but they were significantly different from what ultimately got adopted.
Does the language of what was adopted in the replacement regulations with respect to vesting, does that change vested rights at all?
No, because it's really clear that you can't retroactively apply legislation to change vested rights. That's kind of a fundamental premise of vesting and land use law.
So if you have vested rights to begin with, does it matter what the replacement regulations say about vesting at all?
No, that's the point of vesting, is that it means that your application continues to be governed by the regulations that were in place at the type of complete application, and they aren't subject to changing regulations.
Okay, so this next exhibit is going to be S-52. Tia, what is the document at S-52?
This appears to be Lucy Sloman's notes, and they are dated 9/14/17.
Did you meet with the city on 9/14/2017, do you remember?
I don't recall for sure.
How are you familiar with these notes?
These would be part of the files that I mentioned before that I think we had access to as part of either public records request or discovery.
So these were documents that were provided by the city?
Yes.
Were, do you recall seeing these contemporaneously with this timeframe, or were they something that were provided after the fact?
No, I didn't see them in this timeframe. I only saw them as part of that public records or discovery process, which was much later.
So at the top of the notes here, it says, "SDP vested in DA, why not carry forward?" What do you understand that to mean?
permits are expressly vested in the development standards that are part of the development agreement. And so somebody is asking the question, why you wouldn't carry that forward.
All right, the next exhibit is S-53.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a clarifying question, please?
Yes.
Ms. Corey, this may have just been an issue with the way this previous exhibit, Exhibit S-52, was distributed, but at least in our copy, it appears that it's the same document identically reproduced six times over. Was that your...
That may be the case, and it could just be that that's how it was provided to us. So when it printed out, it was a repeat.
Okay. There aren't intended to be differing sides.
No, not my intention.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're turning to S-53 now. Tia, can you please explain what the document is, S-53?
Yes, so this is an email to Keith Niven from me, and copied on it are Lucy Sloman and Gary Young. And it is regarding the replacement regulations, and it's dated September 25, 2017. And this was in response to the packet that came out just several days before the hearing on the proposed replacement regulations. The city had added a new section to the replacement regulations that was to propose a minimum floor area ratio, or FAR, of one. That has major impacts on the developability of our property, and it was literally inserted into the replacement regulations with no explanation other than a sentence that said, "We inserted a minimum FAR." So this is my email to Keith, asking him where this was coming from, why they were doing it, questioning whether they had allowed time for adequate discussion or review by the PPC, which is the Planning Policy Commission, which was the entity that was holding the hearing, and pointing out that the entire concept of a minimum FAR was entirely inconsistent with what staff had been repeatedly telling us and the public about what was going to guide the new zoning regulations. And it would require development that was very different from the development that was allowed under the Isaguac Highlands Development Agreement. We asked if the city had done any studies or analysis of the consequences of imposing such an FAR, and sort of where did that number come from. And so now, all of a sudden, single-story development's not an option, and maybe even two-story development's not an option. And depending on the regulations and the lot size, maybe even three-story development's not an option. So it has a huge impact on what you can do with the property, and it's basically comparing the lot size to the building size. Here, it was aimed at preventing retail development on our property. And that later was the reason given by Mr. Niven at the PPC hearing.
And the PPC, that's the Planning Policy Commission?
Yes.
What impact does, and you alluded to this a minute ago, but what impact does a floor area ratio of 1.0 have on the projects that Shelter's proposing?
All of them, well, I guess all of them with the exception of the storage facility would not meet the minimum floor area ratio of one. So to give you some context, the, I mean, obviously, the retail doesn't meet it. With multiple buildings spread out, you're not going to meet that kind of floor area ratio. And retail development is not consistent with a floor area of one unless you're talking about constructing an indoor shopping center mall-type development, which is not something that anybody's really building these days. The medical office building, which is actually quite dense and has structured parking, doesn't meet a minimum FAR of one. The Microsoft, the original Microsoft plan for the 63 acres in Isaguac Highlands did not meet an FAR of one. It was like an FAR of .44. So this represented a huge change in vision that was being put forward by staff at the last minute, we felt, in response to having been informed that we had retail and other SDP applications coming in.
So how close in time was your communication to the city that you were going to be doing these SDP and ASDP applications to the change in the FAR?
Within two weeks, I believe. So we met with the city to inform them of the site development permit applications. And at that point, we were only certain as to that we were going to be submitting two. So we knew that we were going to do the retail, and we knew that we were going to do the medical office. And we had described the retail to Keith, explaining that it would be pretty similar to the Grand Ridge Shopping Center that's already up there, and would be complementary to those uses. So he knew exactly what the range of possible FAR was for our proposal.
While we're on the topic, what are, what other regulations in the Replacements Regulations prevent development of Shelter's property, if they were to apply?
The other major issue for us, just from a development standard perspective with the Replacements Regulations, is the structured parking requirement. So the Replacements Regulations basically wrap in the central Isaguac parking requirements for Isaguac Highlands, which have structured parking required for office buildings of very small, I think it's like 5,000 square feet and above, and also require it for retail, which there's really no other jurisdiction that the staff could find an example of that required structured parking for retail, because it's not, it's just not a viable use like that. So the structured parking is the other major thing. And then the way that the two, the FAR, the minimum FAR, and the structured parking interplay is a problem, because the, if you have to build structured parking on your lot, that obviously takes up a portion of your lot. But the way that the code, the Isaguac code is drafted, you don't get floor area credit for structured parking. So it essentially makes you have to build even taller building.
And that was a good clarification to make this. FAR of 1.0, that's a minimum FAR versus a maximum or something else. And so can you describe as a minimum what that means on a property?
Yeah, I mean, as a minimum, if you were treating our property all as one lot, which it is today, because our plot's not processed, you'd have to propose 900,000-some square feet of development as a minimum.
Is that viable on Shelter's property?
No, unless you were going to do residential.
Can you do nine, well, however many numbers of residential might be available?
Those would have to be very big units, since we only have three units of, available there. So, no, it's not viable.
Let's turn to your meeting minutes again. And we're going to be looking at the September 26 meeting. So who attended the September 26 meeting of 2017?
So it looks like that was James and David from Collins Warman, Mark Veldy from KPFF, Matt P. would be Matt Portius from Hewitt, and they were the landscape architect, Lucy Sloman, Jean Lin, and Doug Schlep, and myself.
And what were you discussing at this meeting? What was the purpose of meeting?
This would be the medical office building that we were discussing. I'm trying to think if this would have been the collaborative meeting, or if it would have, I think it would have been the collaborative meeting.
The one that was trying to be scheduled by David in the email that we were just talking about?
Right.
So this happened at the end of September. You turn to the last page of your notes there. Did staff in that meeting have anything to say about complying with the development agreement, and how that was going to move forward?
Yes. So at this meeting, Ms. Sloman told me that she had no intention of following the timeframes in the development agreement, and the reason that she gave was that she didn't have enough staff.
So who was the planner that was assigned to this application, the medical office building application?
Jean Lin.
Was she, is she still the planner on that? Had she consistently been the planner the whole time?
Yes, she's been our planner from day one.
So when Ms. Sloman was saying that there's no staff, so they couldn't comply with the development agreement, what was she referencing to? Jean Lin was at this meeting.
I don't really know for sure, except for it did not seem like she was going to let Jean process it on her own.
If Jean wasn't processing it on her own, what's your understanding of what it might look like to have somebody else in that process?
Well, I think that Lucy was going to continue to participate in the reviews, and I don't really know what it looked like behind the scenes, other than from the notes that we have from Jean, where it seemed like Lucy was giving her direction.
So let's turn back to those notes. We had brought them up a little while ago. I want to make sure I got the number right. It should be at S-47 now in our record.
Yes.
So does Ms. Lynn, Jean Lynn, discuss the medical office building at all in her notes?
She does. She has a page that says 9/26/17, Med Office Collaboration.
And just in general, can you describe what she notes there?
These just seem to be her notes from the meeting, where we, our consultants, David and James walked through what the, gave an overview of the project. Lucy had questions about what would happen to the entitlement. I think the, her initial reaction was that she was totally underwhelmed by our proposal, and didn't like it, and felt like it was way too suburban. So her concern was what happened to the unused entitlement. And we talked about the fact that it could be reallocated to other blocks, or that there could be a future phase later. We went through site layout, and driveways, and parking, and fire, and pedestrian connections. And we talked some about market, and how that was really driving the size of our building, that we can't build a building that's bigger than we anticipate being able to lease.
So in terms of the next steps that were being required, what was the next step, according to the city in this meeting?
They made it clear that pre-app was required, and that that would be the next step.
Would a pre-app be required under the development agreement?
No.
Let's turn back to your meeting minutes, and look at the September 28, 2017 meeting.
Are you talking about my notes from the PPC hearing on September 28?
Yes.
Okay.
So was this the PPC hearing that you mentioned a moment ago, where the FAR, the new FAR regulations were introduced?
Yes, it was.
If you flip to the second page of your notes from that meeting, I'm looking at the fifth bullet point down. What did Director Niven have to say about minimum FAR, and how that might be used?
Sorry, you're on the second page?
Yeah, I'm looking at page two, and it's about halfway down the page.
Okay. Let's see, he said that when the Replacements Regulations ended, that there would be no more master developer to guide the vision, and that Grand Ridge Plaza was no good. But luckily, they pushed for one parking deck, and that the minimum FAR just gives them another tool, and that they can't, the city can't stop single-story retail development without imposing this minimum FAR.
So can you, actually, that's that full bullet point. Will you please just read that into the record?
Sure. Keith said, "Now that there is no more master developer to guide." So without standards, you can't guide a property owner to implement the vision. Grand Ridge Plaza is no good, but luckily, we pushed for one parking deck. Minimum FAR just gives us another tool. We can't stop single-story retail without it.
So at this point in time, was the city aware of Shelter's single-story retail project?
Yes.
Were there any other single-story retail projects in the Isaguac Highlands?
Well, I mean, there's the existing Grand Ridge Plaza development, but it's built. I guess they had one more building to go at that point in time. But no, this was entirely for our property, aimed at our property.
All right, so the next exhibit is going to be S-54. Tia, can you describe the document at S-54, please?
I believe that this was the initial drawing or sketch that we used for the city collaboration meeting for the retail development.
Okay, and so the area that's highlighted in red, is that just one portion of Shelter's property?
Right, that's one portion of our property, and that's the portion on which the retail SDP sits, approximately.
And who, in the bottom corner there, it says Fuller Sears Architects. Who are they?
So Fuller Sears Architects are the architect that we hired to help us with our retail site development permit application. They're very experienced in retail development. They have since been acquired by MG2. So in some of the materials, you'll see Fuller Sears kind of fade off and be replaced by MG2, but it's the same project team that is working for us.
And they're working on just the retail SDP?
Correct.
What's the date of this document?
It is October 2, 2017.
Do you recall when the collaboration meeting for retail took place?
I don't, though I would suspect I have meeting notes from it, maybe?
Was it roughly around that date?
I would assume so.
I think in, let's see, S-6. So Exhibit S-6 was a previously admitted exhibit. I'll represent that this was a chart prepared by Ms. Sloman. And it shows the collaboration meeting date for the retail SDP is 10/3/2017. Is that consistent with your memory of when that happened?
Yes.
So, and again, this was a collaboration meeting, so was this a stuff that was required by the development agreement, or was it something that the city was requiring?
No, it's not required by the development agreement, but it was required by city staff.
Okay. So I'd like to turn to Exhibit C 13. So moving forward in the chronology of things, what is this document at C 13?
This is the complete application determination for our preliminary plat.
And do you recall when this was received?
I don't recall the exact date, but I know it was sometime in October of 2017. But it's dated August 11, 2017, which is the date on which it should have been deemed complete, or actually, it was deemed complete because the city hadn't requested any additional information.
And is that pursuant to Appendix L that you're making that determination that the city, it would have been complete because the city hadn't provided any feedback by that date?
Yes.
Why did it take so long, or what's your understanding of why it took so long to get this complete application determination?
I'm not really sure. I know that Dave Caton, our consultant, had had various email exchanges with Jean Lynn, asking for the determination. At one point, she indicated that she had deemed it complete as of a different date, August 23 or something, but then just hadn't gotten around to writing it up, but promised it would be coming, and we just didn't get it till October. And then she noted when she sent it that it had been backdated to August, which was when it should have been issued.
Turning back to your meeting minutes, let's look at the meeting that happened on October 12 of 2017. Do you recall what the purpose of this meeting was and who it was with?
This was a meeting with Keith Niven, and it would have been myself and most likely Gary attending with me. It could have been Eric Evans, but I think it was Gary. And the the main topic, I think, was mostly having to do with the replacement regulations and what had gone on and was going on with those at the time.
So you note the recommendation for an FAR 1. Did Director Niven indicate where that FAR 1.0 is coming from?
Well, yeah, I mean, he had explained that the FAR of 1 came from basically looking at the area of our property and the maximum development and thinking that he thought he should get at least half of the maximum, so that equaled about a 1, and so he just went with that, and there was no study behind it or anything. But that the city was afraid that all we would do was retail, and so that's why they were imposing it.
So it was your understanding from this meeting that that FAR came, it was developed specifically because of Shelter's property and proposed developments?
From this meeting and from the PPC hearing. And then later, from other meetings where he also made those statements.
Okay, so I'm afraid we've got another one of our packets of documents. So we'll do the same thing that we did with the last in terms of doing the exhibit number and then A through, whatever it takes to get through them. So this would be Exhibit S 55. And the first document here would be S 55A. Tia, what's the document at S 55A?
It's a pre-application meeting submittal requirements.
And what does that relate to?
I believe this is the city's checklist of submittal requirements that have to be submitted prior to scheduling a pre-application meeting.
And I'll represent, just so that we can keep things in context, that these were documents related to the medical office building application. I'd like to introduce Exhibit S 55B. Can you describe what the document is at S 55B?
This is a project narrative for our medical office building site, or administrative site development permit.
What's the date of that document?
October 23, 2017.
Do you recall, is that when the pre-application was submitted for the medical office building?
Yes, that sounds about right.
And so what does the project narrative provide for? I mean, what sorts of details does it give?
It gives a basic project description and where it is and how access works. And then it gives also an analysis of how it meets the traditional Townscape Neighborhood Guidelines. This one also has a section about how the project is a good neighbor to the Polygon Homes development to the north. Because that was something that the city had asked us to include.
And next we've got S 55C. And what is the document at S 55C?
This is just the brief project description.
And then the next one is S 55D.
And this is the land use permit application form for the pre-application.
Okay, and so that one, just to clarify, that's for a pre-application, but it's using a land use permit application form?
Correct.
And remind us, so when when the city of Issaquah requires a pre-application, what's the difference between that and a full application?
It has somewhat less requirements, but it's still a really extensive package that you submit as a preliminary land use application package.
Okay, the next one is S 55E. What is the document at S 55E?
So this is the main project submittal document, so this is for the medical office building. And it has, you know, site views and off-site views and gives orientation to other natural and man-made features around the site and more photo views and goes through site access opportunities and constraints. Bike and pedestrian circulation, vehicular circulation. There's several pages of that. It goes through parking calculation and layout. It shows existing site views along various streets. And then has some drawings that give the sort of bulk and scale as compared to neighboring developments. And then there's an engineering component as well as building and parking inspiration photos that are included near the back. Oh, and there's also landscape site diagram with images.
So all of that was included just as part of the pre-application?
Correct.
So next we have S 55F. What is this document?
This is the transmittal cover sheet from Collins Warman to the city of Issaquah.
Then S 55G. Looks like another title policy. What's this?
This is, again, a title commitment or a subdivision guarantee that's required to be submitted with the application materials. So they can see the state of title and any exceptions there, too.
Okay. And so you've mentioned earlier that October 23, 2017, that sounds like the right date for the pre-application submittal. At S 55H is going to be the next exhibit. What's the, what's the date of this communication and what is it?
This is an email from Jean Lynn to David Holmes. And it is when she sent the pre-application comments for the medical office building to David. So that happened on Friday, December 29, 2017.
So submitted on October 23 of 2017 and received comments back on December 29 of 2017?
Correct. It's a much longer timeframe for these than we had experienced for our preliminary plat.
In terms of receiving comments back on the pre-application?
Correct.
Okay, so I need to go through a similar exercise for the other project that was pending at this time that was being submitted. I have another packet of documents. It's 955 right now. So I want to be respectful of your time. Would you prefer that I wait, or should we try to get through this packet? It's, it's going to be a similar thing to what we just went through, and it looks like it's one, two, three, four, or five documents.
So can you do that in about 15 minutes?
I think so.
Let's give it a go. Let's go for, let's go a little longer.
Thank you. Okay. So I'll represent also around this time was your retail application. Does October 23 sound like the date that that pre-application was submitted for that as well?
Yes.
And so these, this packet of documents is going to be S 56. And we'll start with S 56A. Tia, will you please describe the document at S 56A?
Yes, this is the, the main project component of our retail SDP application. Or pre-application? Pre-application.
Preapplication?
Yeah.
So this would have been the one around the October 23 timeframe?
Right, it's dated October 23, 2017, and you can see that Fuller Sears had been replaced by MG2 logo on it at that point.
Okay. And then the next exhibit is F 56B, or S 56B, excuse me. And what is this document?
This is the project narrative for the pre-application for the retail SDP.
And in general, what was, what was being proposed for the retail project?
The retail project had 11 buildings over five lots. And was very similar in nature and intended to be complementary of the existing Grand Ridge Plaza Shopping Center that's across the street.
So the next exhibit is F 56C, or, I'm sorry, I keep saying F, S 56C.
And this is the land use permit application for the pre-application for the retail SDP.
All right, and then F, or S. My brain is getting tired at 10 o'clock PM. S 56D. What's the document at S 56D?
This appears to be a schedule of land use permit fees.
So is it, your understanding from looking at that, that those fees go to the preliminary application?
I would assume so if it was part of our preliminary application submittal. I would assume so if it was part of our preliminary application submittal.
I think we've reached a good place to stop in terms of those exhibits. That would close out S-56.
Appreciate that. Given that we've reached our agreed upon time of adjournment, the public hearing, the public hearing tonight, on tonight's agenda will be continued to a special meeting of the commission occurring tomorrow, February 6 in the, in the council chambers, starting at 6:30. And so now the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Starting at 6:30? I know.